They tell me I'm up, and we're up and ready to start the work session for July the 9th, 2019. I hope everybody had a good 4th of July holiday. And we're gonna start out tonight with a little different order. I'm gonna allow item 17 to come first on our agenda if nobody has any opposition because she also has a special announcement that we want to distribute. So now's the time for citizens to make comments that are not on the agenda. Y'all can come on up. If there's anyone that wants to speak, please come forward. I don't have any speaker cards, so we'll close that and we'll go to item number 17, which is Consideration Resolution 2019-64 to Adopt the Franklin Trail Brand Strategy and Brand Mark Plan. But I would ask Ellie if she would make her announcement before we go to the branding.
I would be so happy to make that. And hopefully you guys all saw this in the paper yesterday, but we just received our 2018 visitor number. We get that separate from our economic impact. We'll get that later this summer. But in 2018 Franklin and Williamson County had 1.72 million visitors. That was an increase of 13.6%. National average increase was 1.9%. So we were well ahead of the national average. This is our fourth consecutive year in a row that we were higher than the national average. So we have been very excited about that. I want to thank all of you because it takes all of us working together to get those kind of numbers. But we're excited and thank you for welcoming in our visitors and treating them well while they're here. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
There's a financial benefit to those visitors.
There is.
You're gonna talk a little bit about that tax number?
I'll be back in a couple of months with my financial...
It's over $500 for residents in terms of that.
Yes, so in 2017, thanks to what the visitors are spending in our community, all of our households save $516.45 on their personal taxes. So we love when the visitors come in and they buy things and they eat out and they stay in our hotels because that goes right back into our community. Thanks, Eric.
Now for the item that I read.
Thank you, Mayor. So, of course, you've already met... Let me push that on. My apologies. So the team that we have before you tonight, a couple of weeks ago, we came before the CIC committee to present regarding the Franklin Trails as well as the brand, the logo. Tonight before you for consideration is a resolution to adopt this brand and logo, and then that would give direction back to city staff as well as the community committee to develop guidelines and branding strategy. So how we would use it on city property within the parks, specific guidelines on signage, wayfinding signage. So that's what's before you as far as for consideration is Resolution 2019-64. Part of the mission, excuse me, for the Franklin Riverwalk Trails Committee is comprised of community and city leaders provide strategic direction and advocacy for the creation of trails, greenways, and blueways with the purpose of improving quality of life by connecting city parks, neighborhoods, historic resources, and area attractions. And so that really encompasses who's at this table with me this evening. Of course Ellie has already spoken with the Executive Director of the Williamson County Convention and Visitors Bureau, but you also have Tori Barnhill, it's Executive Director of our Friends of Franklin Parks, and Tom Curl, who is, sits on many boards, who is a resident of Franklin, but also is an advocate for parks as well as for the reason we're here tonight. And so we appreciate his input and leadership. And so it was real important as far as being a part of this committee is to understand also that there was a vision provided, that connecting the Franklin community through trails, greenways, and blueways to improve the quality of life was so important. And that's why with the existing trail systems that we have within parks, the multipurpose pathways that we have on Mackatcher and others to come, and even the connections sometimes through sidewalks, it's important that people understand where they are, but that we are connected through our city, and it's not just one destination to another, but it's about a destination with purpose. And so with saying that, I'm gonna turn this over because it was important to understand who our target audience was for this, and I'll turn it over to Tom.
Thank you, Lisa. Again, my name is Tom Curl. I'm probably not as well-known as my esteemed friends here, but been involved in Franklin, probably more behind the scenes than they have, but been here for 20 years. And parks and trails and waterways are very important to me, and so I've gotten involved with the committees here. So as Lisa was saying, we focused on the audiences that the trails would be a part of. So we reached out to a lot of different people and we thought, we want this to be for everybody. And that's the most critical part. This is for tourists, for kids. This is for adults who want to just take a walk, or kids who want to ride their bike to the park or be able to ride to downtown. And connecting these communities throughout Franklin is huge. And so when looking at that and tourists, you know, Ellie obviously has some great news on the tourist side, but we think that the recreation part and the trails and waterways that we provide are a positive for this community and a quality of life. And so that, I really embrace this. I love it. My background is I'm actually a developer. I invest in real estate. I also finance real estate. I finance projects both on the affordable housing side. I work for SunTrust Bank. But I've also rehabbed houses in this community, but I live here. So I work here, I live here, and I embrace the outstanding community we have. To take that other side of the audiences, so we looked and we tried to get the feedback of who we want to reach out to. We then took the other side and said, okay, who do we want this to represent? And looking at the signage and getting the feedback, we looked at, you know, the typical man with the walking stick and the mountain in the background. And we found that when talking with everybody within the community, we found that it's not just historic Franklin, it's all of Franklin. We found the people, kids related to, found the colors that we had, that we presented, and that's what we'll talk about this evening. It was a cohesive decision. Not everybody agrees with it. You know, everybody has different opinions, but it was what we came together as an audience, as a group, that we really grabbed around, and it grew on many of us. And so that's kind of the audiences that I wanted to present. The audiences of who we're reaching out to, and the audiences that we had help us come to the colors and the design that we came to. So what I'd like to do is turn it over to my friend Tori, who is going to talk about the discovery phase of the design.
Thank you, Tom. So to tell you a little bit about our discovery team and the impetus of that, Ellie had the foresight to say, you know, a discovery team comprised of people not necessarily on our community committee, but from all over Franklin to get together and really outline what this could look like for our entire community. So it was comprised of someone from historic zoning, a community leader. We had a HOA Alliance President to represent all the neighborhoods. Just who would it appeal to? And just try to take a good look and poke holes in it from every angle to see what would work really well for our community. So we met and the logo was presented, and then we actually went through another round of logos and came back with this, and we were all like, hmm, that really kind of checks all the boxes. And so Ellie, we're gonna turn this over to Ellie, and she's gonna present the logo, but that was kind of the process of getting to this point. Thank you.
So what, Brandy was right. We went through a lot of different logos, and we kept going back to the drawing board because what we wanted to do was we wanted it to address short-term concerns while establishing a strong long-term ownable identity. We wanted to communicate the broad diversity of Franklin and the trail system from greenways to blueways, sidewalks to hiking biking trails, and, you know, into neighborhoods and parks. We wanted it to work as a system. So what we did was, and we wanted it to be unique to Franklin. I mean, Tom is right. We started Googling trails and it was Pass Two Mountains, the little hiker guy. And we were like, that looks like everybody else. It would just be like everybody else but with our name on it. So we wanted to do something that was different and that was uniquely ours. And so we worked with Matt at Brand Metal, he's sorry he couldn't be here with us tonight, and created this logo. So if you look at it, the different colors represent different things. The green, well initially, or the blue, initially I saw sky, some people see the water, so it kind of speaks different to different people, but it really represents all the different paths. And what we wanted was an identifiable mark. So if you see this green without any words around it or whatever, you know you are part of the Franklin Trail System. And then we took it a step further and said we could use mileage markers to represent what kind of trail you're on. So a light green could be mountain biking, or a blue could be you're on the waterway, you know, on the blue way and so forth. And then we're like, well, we also needed to look different because in some areas we might use it on stacked stone, and in some areas we might have it on its own pole. So we actually did, this is a little bit difficult to see, but we did it bronze. So if it's on stacked stone, it could be in bronze. It's almost like 3D because it would be different levels, I guess, but it could go on a bronze, or on a stone stack, it could go on a pole depending on where it is. Then we took it the next step and we said, okay, well, if you're on the battlefield or if you're on the, oh, thank you, Eric, sorry. I have a loud voice, so I just figured everybody could hear me. But if you're on Chestnut Bend, how do you know you're on that trail? And if your friend calls and says, what are you doing? How do you tell them where you are on the Franklin Trails? So the whole system will be called the Franklin Trail System, but then individual trails, it could look something like this. Now, we're gonna update this based on some feedback we got at the CIC meeting, but it could be Franklin Trails and then you're at the, on the mountain biking trail, or you're on Chestnut Bend Trail. So then it'll start identifying individual trails, systems within. I've rented a lot of trails all over the country, and I love that because you could call somebody, or if you needed help, you could call and be like, I'm on this part of the trail. So again, this will be our identifier, and then the words would change depending on where you are along the trail system. So, anything to add, you guys? Nope? Okay.
I think the only thing I would add is that by doing that, by saying like it's Chestnut Bend or what, it gives it a...
So sorry. I'm a rookie. By having it like Chestnut Bend or an identifier, it embraces those communities as well and makes it very inclusive for them, so that their Franklin Trail running through their community makes it a part of that community.
Comments? Alderman McClendon.
I like it. I agree with you. I think your options are basically something kind of abstract, or the little hiker guy with a staff. And that's been done. So I like it, you know, and I think it is important that each of the sections be identified as such. So, well done.
Alderman Berger.
I love it. I think it's great. I like it. It's unique. It's abstract, but it's not too crazy out there. And it does, it shows you water, it shows you sky, it shows you trails, gives you the green feel, the blue feel. The only comment I would have is the bronze one. If you're putting it on stacked stone, it may blend in so much that you don't see it. So that would be my comment. And not so sure, even though the bronze would look good on a trail in the woods, half the year you're gonna have it green in that area too. So I wouldn't necessarily think you need to go to bronze. I would just keep it consistent, keep your branding consistent on that. I don't think it's that necessary, and again, if it's on stacked stone, it might blend in. So that was my only comment, but thank you.
Alderman Bransford.
I assume you all are seeing this for t-shirts and coffee mugs and stuff from a marketing standpoint, and this logo, if you're in Chicago and you see someone with a cup with that, you know it's Franklin, Tennessee perhaps. Is the word Franklin on it at all?
So right now, no, we're gonna change these. Pearl, thank you for that question, because I think what we'll do on the sub-trails, it'll still say Franklin Trails, and then below that we'll say what trail you're specifically on. So that way we never lose the words Franklin Trail.
Okay.
Yeah. We didn't have time to change it before this meeting.
Beautiful job. Thank you for the creative.
Anybody else? Alderman Martin.
I agree. And I appreciate your, Ellie, your explanation. I think it's great, and I look forward to it.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item number one.
Thank you.
Event permit application for Raise the Roofs. Anybody got any questions for Tori?
While she's here.
While she's here. Bye, Tori.
And this is on both agendas because we don't have a second meeting in July, so this will be voted on tonight.
And Lynn Oslin's gonna give us the development activity report for FY 2019 and comparisons to FY 2018.
So we've just finished the fiscal year of 2019, as the mayor said, and you can also look at it as the first six months of the calendar year of 2019. So we're gonna reflect on a few different reports that touch on that. And while we have your attention tonight too, we do want to have Shannon McCoy with us as well, who heads up our program related to our flood prevention and flood rating system participation program, and want to share with you an update on our rating within the community rating system. So I guess we'll start with Lynn and then Shannon will take over from there.
Thank you. So I know you've all seen the red, white, and blue and red before, so I just wanted to do something a little bit different this time, although this should be in your packets, and give you a PowerPoint presentation regarding comparing fiscal year 2018 to fiscal year 2019 that we just completed. So for permits issued in fiscal year 2019, we had 6,148.
Ta-da! Thank you. Sorry about that. So fiscal year 2019, we had 6,148 permits issued compared to 6,831 permits issued in fiscal year 2018. Total construction valuation for fiscal year 2019, $578 billion, excuse me, $578 million dollars. For fiscal year 2018, $911 million dollars. Stormwater and grading permits issued fiscal year 2019, 31; fiscal year 2018, 45. Dwelling units, new dwelling units for fiscal year 2019. Single-family homes, we had 359 with an average square footage of 4,078. For fiscal year 2018, single-family homes, we had 495 permits issued at an average square foot of 4,040. Townhomes in 2019, 150; townhomes 2018, 124. Multi-family 2019, we had 64 versus 2018, we had 1,247. Hotels, we had three hotels in 2019 with 439 rooms, and five hotels with 568 rooms in fiscal year 2018. New office buildings, we had 15 buildings in 2019 with 347,635 square feet. We had 11 buildings in fiscal year 2018 for a total of 1,372,000 square feet. New restaurants, we had two each in each of the years, 2019 and 2018. Both were of the fast food variety. And last but not least, we had 496 garbage containers issued in 2019 versus 621 in And then I did a little bit of research on what was happening around the country as far as fastest-growing cities, since Franklin is always placing in many of those lists. So three cities in Tennessee for the calendar year of 2018 placed on the top 100 list of fastest-growing cities, reported by the U.S. Census Bureau, which I report to every month regarding our building permit statistics as well. Murfreesboro ranked 15th with 2,750 permits for dwelling units. 55% of those were for single-family and townhomes versus 45% were for multi-family. Franklin ranked 40th. 59% of ours were single-family and townhomes versus 404, or 41% were multi-family. And Nashville, I actually was not able to get the exact figures as far as the percentages go. They ranked 69th on the list of units, dwelling units per capita, and roughly half were single-family or townhomes, and the other half were multi-family. Also included in this presentation as far as the PowerPoint goes is the map of building permits issued by Ward and Ward Number Three, which on the map is shown in the pink, and that had the most building permits issued for the first half of this year, although we did have building permits issued all over town in all wards.
So if you look at your attachment that says permits issued by Ward, that provides the map that Lynn's talking about.
Yes. And then I also, on the PowerPoint, have the link that you can get to on our City of Franklin website that will take you to the interactive building permits issued map as well as the interactive planning and development maps, which are kind of fun to play with.
So on those, you can literally roll over a site and see what's been approved there. It color codes it by what stage in the development process it is. You can actually click in further, deeper, and see specific development plans that were submitted and approved through our process. So there's really a lot of information out there available to you that you can see specifically what's happening at certain sites. If you're curious, you drive by a location and wonder exactly what is going on or where that is, you can see all the detail just by going to our website.
And I have one last item just wanted to make you aware of. Effective July 1st, as stated in our municipal code, based on the Consumer Price Index, we raised the building permit fee for single-family detached dwellings and additions to single-family detached dwellings by one penny to 63 cents per square foot. And that's a single payment, which includes the building permit, electrical, plumbing, and mechanical permits.
So you may remember a few years ago, we simplified all that to go to this square footage. We used to have separate little permits and rates, et cetera, and just rolled this into one, and then we just adjusted annually based on an inflationary calculation, which Lynn just explained, this time came around to one penny per square foot.
Correct.
Great report.
Thank you.
Shannon?
Well, as you all know, the City of Franklin is part of the community rating system with FEMA for reduced flood insurance premium for all the residents. In 2018, we applied, found some points that we weren't getting and applied for a change. So we were able to drop down to a level eight in October, when we have recently received our fine, heavy, nice plaque with our level eight rating on it. So thank you all for being supportive of the floodplain regulations, and hopefully moving forward, we can continue to drop down and get more increases because it's 5% for each class that we can drop, so.
So this translates into a 10% reduction or discount for our citizens that purchase flood insurance?
Correct. We went from a nine to an eight. Nine is the minimum you can, to be in the program. So making progress.
Questions? Comments? I'm gonna make a quick comment. Who was gonna say something? I don't mind. I get to sit in a lot of wonderful meetings, and I get to sit with our staff sometimes, and I just love to brag on our staff. I had a meeting with Shannon in there, and she stood toe-to-toe, knew everything in such great detail, and so I was very impressed. We appreciate the great work you do for the city, and thank you for getting us down to that level.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna take items three through eight, which has to do with Southbrook. And Mr. Gamble had asked if he could have a little bit of time to explain it. So would you want to go first?
Yeah, let's go ahead.
Sure.
Well, how about we have staff present, talk through what's come through, and then have Greg talk about it?
Have some hands.
Okay, yeah, go ahead and start that.
While they're talking, you can hand out.
Well, we have, this is a new development for, it's called Southbrook. It's PUD subdivision. We have four items, including, because it is in the urban growth boundary. So it is a plan of services, annexation, zoning, and then a development plan submittal. And Greg can explain more about kind of the details and everything, or I can go ahead and start with my reports on the plan of services if we prefer. This plan of services for the annexed property being considered is part of the Southbrook Development Plan. The development plan will need to comply with Conservation Subdivision Design Concept as outlined in Envision Franklin. The plan of services was recommended by staff and unanimously recommended by the Planning Commission. I can keep going?
Why don't you just cover the whole thing and even talk about the, if you want to roll through the...
Sure.
Yeah. And even the, I think there's parkland identification and just the whole ball of wax.
It's a whole gambit. That's right. Start over? No, you're right.
We're listening.
All right. For the annexation, the property is within the city's urban growth boundary and designated in Envision Franklin as appropriate for Conservation Subdivision and single-family residential uses. The associated development proposed in this location is Southbrook. For the annexation, staff recommends approval, and the Planning Commission recommended approval unanimously to the board. As for the zoning, Envision Franklin places the majority of these properties into the Conservation Subdivision Design Concept. Envision Franklin places the northeasternmost property in the single-family design concept. The request for SDR zoning is appropriate based on the concepts described in Envision Staff recommends approval, and the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval to the Board and Mayor and Alderman. The development plan is a little lengthy here, so I was going to warn you about that. While the plan meets many of the concepts and recommendations of Envision Franklin, including maintaining 50% open space and fronting homes along Lewisburg Avenue, including deeper setbacks. In terms of lot dimension, this plan has over 200 lots that do not meet the minimum lot width policy in Envision Franklin. Envision Franklin recommends a minimum lot width of 45 feet for single-family lots accessed by an alley. The applicant is requesting 34-foot lots, and these narrow lots account for 27% of the proposed dwelling units and 43% of the single-family lots within the development. If through this discussion, the Planning Commission or Board would like the minimum lot dimensions to be revisited with an annual update, to Envision Franklin staff will undertake this study. Such a change to Envision Franklin... Such a change to Envision Franklin may warrant sewer basin studies and transportation plans to be revisited as well. As a possible project consideration, the parkland dedication agreement is being considered along with this development plan. As the needs for the park are assessed, these changes will need to be incorporated into this plan. These additional amenities may not encroach into the hillside overlay nor the area of protected slopes. Parking for the park should be evaluated to ensure that adequate parking is provided within the park property without overwhelming the adjacent city streets or private parking lots nearby. So for the development plan for Southbrook, staff recommends disapproval based on the smaller lot sizes. However, the Planning Commission did recommend approval by a vote of seven to two. Staff recommends disapproval of the development plan. Planning Commission recommended approval by a vote of seven to two. Thank you.
Okay, good job. Mr. Gamble? Did you want to make a quick comment?
No, just to say, we also added a request to look at some soils that are a problem that was agreed to by the developer.
Absolutely. What kind of soil was it?
Oh, yeah, it's Delros soil, which is the, you know, the house that slipped down the hill on country roads.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Gamble.
Yeah, my name is Greg Gamble, representing the applicant for Southbrook. And I provided you a packet tonight. This is not really new information. It's just put in a format that I think is going to be easier for me to explain in a very short period of time. I believe we started our first meeting with planning staff about July of last year, so I think it's been about a year since our planning effort began, since we've had five neighborhood meetings. We met with Goose Creek Estates. We met with and invited all of Stream Valley to a meeting. We met with neighbors who are currently in Williamson County but live along Lewisburg Pike, and we had very good attendance at those meetings, and in my opinion, very positive outcomes to those meetings as well. The property consists of 318 acres. 184 acres of that we're leaving in open space. Portions of that are required hilltop hillside overlay, but we're going to convert that into a City of Franklin Public Park with your approval. We are planning this with a diversity of homes for many different reasons, but the number one reason is because we believe that neighborhoods that have mixed economies are more sustainable long-term, they're healthier communities, and appropriately positioned adjacent to an economic center like Berry Farms. I believe that this property is unique for that reason. In development plans, they are reviewed on a case-by-case basis in Franklin. They are approved based upon the merits of those designs. And in some situations, it calls for a unique master plan that in some instances deviate from a global citywide policy. We are proposing lots that are less than 45-foot in width, and I'd like to kind of explain a little bit about why we're proposing that. We are currently showing 27% of our homes less than 45-foot in width, which previously, when we presented to you at the Joint Conceptual Workshop, that number was around 36%. So we've reduced that number quite a bit. But if you look at the first page here that I provided to you in your packet, you'll see the last four years of development approvals in Franklin from 2015 to 2018. Over that period of time, the City of Franklin has approved 518 single-family homes. Well, you saw just a minute ago that in 2018, you issued over 490 single-family home permits. So, in four years, you've replaced about one year of inventory with plan approvals. Townhomes and condominiums, last year, we actually had a reduction because of Branch Creek Crossing converted from condominium to office, but that was a total of 390. And you see here in the apartments, a total of 2,000 apartments that were approved, and that number seems large, but if you look at it and comparison to the chart over on this side here, which is the non-residential site plans that were approved, in the past three years alone, the city has approved 3.8 million square feet of non-residential, which is job growth, it's job creation. On the next page, you may be familiar with this slide from a previous presentation at the Joint Conceptual Workshop, but this is the 2015 data from Williamson, Inc. This shows that in 2015, we had 60,000 people commuting into the City of Franklin for employment. So, since 2015, we have 3.8 million square feet of additional non-residential that's been approved in the City of Franklin, equalling a higher increase in the number of inbound commuters for employment. We just have not had the housing to keep up with the amount of job growth that we have seen. If you look on the next page then, this is Berry Farms. In Berry Farms, they're currently entitled for 3.8 million square feet of non-residential. We estimate that to be plus or minus 18,000 jobs. They're only about 25% complete in their build-out. So we know that over the next few years, we're going to continue to see employment opportunities increase for the Berry Farms area. As of this month, the median household income in Franklin is $81,000 for a typical household, not individual, but household. Based upon that, someone who put down 10% for a mortgage would be able to afford approximately $450,000 mortgage. So that's the median. That's the majority of where the City of Franklin residents are with their income. We've provided to you here on this page a projection of where we expect and see home values for Southbrook, and this is based upon communities throughout Franklin that have similar design characteristics. Berry Farms, West Haven, up and down the Crowthers Parkway corridor where we're seeing new homes built. And the big houses start at about $280,000 per home, and we'll have homes all the way up to $1 million. You will see that the homes that are between the 34-foot and 44-foot lots are between $400,000 and $575,000, and those homes are truly targeted at the median income in Franklin. Lots that are less than 45-foot in width are not new to Franklin. We've been planning neighborhoods for the past 20 years with lots less than 45-foot in width on alleys. West Haven, Simmons Ridge, Lockwood Glen, Echelon, Waters Edge, Berry Farms, all have lots less than 45-foot in width on alleys. But they are key components that we've integrated into the Southbrook plan, and those include that those lots less than 45-foot in width are on internal blocks. In other words, they're not visible from Lewisburg Pike. All lots visible from Lewisburg Pike conform to the standards of Envision Franklin. Lots that are conforming to the 45-foot width standard are located on the corners of all blocks throughout the neighborhood. Architecture must be designed with historically correct materials, features, proportions. There is no reduction in the quality of the home to achieve a lower price point. The homes all have to be built of the same architectural standard throughout Southbrook. The streetscape must include inviting front porches, lush landscape, and safe pedestrian zones. Those are all key elements that we've incorporated into our plan as it relates to the smaller lots. In Southbrook, development pays for development. On this page, I provided you three aspects of fees that are paid to the City of Franklin and Williamson County. Southbrook will pay $4.7 million in roadway impact fees. That applies to both collector roads and arterial roads. Southbrook will pay 5.6, almost 5.7 million dollars to Williamson County schools through this development proposal. Parkland dedication, we have a requirement for $3.2 million to be paid to City of Franklin Parks or applied through the parkland agreements. On the next page then, I want to talk a little bit about Lewisburg Pike. This shows you the arterial road proposed as a part of the major thoroughfare plan. This is a four-lane section, 40-foot median, 132-foot right-of-way. Southbrook has a requirement to dedicate 36 feet on its side of the existing right-of-way of Lewisburg Pike to accommodate this future roadway section. The improvement is scheduled from Goose Creek Bypass to McLemore to the south. The next few pages show you the road improvements off-site that will be provided through this development. The first is the improvement to Goose Creek Bypass and Lewisburg Pike. You'll notice in pink, I'm showing all of the additional laneage that will be provided as a part of this development. There will be additional turn lanes, there will be additional through lanes. In the future, when the four-lane boulevard is constructed, there will be no additional improvements needed or required for Goose Creek and Lewisburg Pike with the exception of Goose Creek Bypass. So we're going to accommodate with this development the majority of the improvements that will be needed at this intersection to accommodate traffic flow from Lewisburg Pike onto the interstate. The next few pages you can look at later. These show the various turn lanes along Lewisburg Pike entering and exiting out of the development. The most significant one I'll point out to you is at Stream Valley. Traffic signal will be required at this intersection with the proposal of this development in addition to turn lanes that will accommodate Stream Valley. You'll notice in front of Stream Valley that the right-of-way for Lewisburg Pike kicks way over to the west. Well, that's because we can't do anything to change the entrance to Stream Valley because of landscape and signage, et cetera. So in this particular instance, we're having to dedicate the almost half of the full right-of-way of Lewisburg Pike to accommodate that. You can flip then a couple pages forward. I want to take you to this sheet here, which shows you Avalon. We talked about this a little bit in the Joint Conceptual Workshop. This became a, really a starting point for us as we're looking at what is Lewisburg Pike in the future. We talked a little bit about this with staff and talking about the landscape and the greenway. What we identified here is that the building closest to the pavement is about 125 feet away. If you look at Stream Valley, the home that's closest to Lewisburg today is about 125 feet away. So we started here, and if you look on the next page, you'll see a bird's-eye perspective that shows you big houses running onto Lewisburg Pike and the greenway and the linear park that's in front of those. Here, the road that's shown Lewisburg Pike is as it is today, so this is not the future boulevard. The next page here shows you kind of a sitting down at grounds level, looking at the big houses along Lewisburg Pike and what they'll look like. If you look here at these two separate attachments that I provided to you, the first one is just north of Stream Valley. The black label is the distance from the single-family lot to the existing edge of pavement. So, we have numbers of 155 feet, 134 feet, 176 feet. The black lines represent what you would have today with the development starts. The red number shows you the distance of the house to the edge of pavement once the four-lane median-divided boulevard is fully installed. The 40-foot median is really kind of worst, that's the biggest. As Board and Mayor and Alderman, just like Columbia Pike, you can determine what that road design is, but we're starting there and using that as our dimension. So, on this next page then, Stream Valley is at the top, and now we're looking at the big houses that are to the south of that. This main entrance here accesses, goes straight to our clubhouse. The historic Sugar Hill House is just to the bottom here. So, these homes in black, again, as it sits today, 160 feet from the front of the house to the edge of pavement. As you go further down, we're maintaining that 150, 160 feet. When the road is constructed as a four-lane median-divided boulevard, we go to 95 at the closest, but further to the south, we're at 125 feet, 115. We worked closely with staff on really what Lewisburg Pike is going to look like. We didn't want big houses soldiered down the road. We want more of a historic form where they stagger back and forth. They're not all the same distance. So to say we're at this line in the sand and we're not any closer wouldn't be true. Some are a little bit closer, some are a little bit further back, and they vary down the street. You'll notice on this map that you see a hatched area in front. That is a 15-foot area that gives flexibility to either bring forward or push back. At the narrowest point in all of these lots, we're maintaining a 25, sorry, 22-foot driveway in the back of each house for additional guest parking, but some of those driveways could be longer. On this next piece, I wanted to talk with you a little bit about Williamson County schools. Again, I mentioned that this development is responsible for 5.6, almost 5.7 million dollars to go toward Williamson County schools. The school department has already slated this area adjacent to Oakview Elementary School on Henpanck Lane as a new middle school. Board and Mayor and Alderman are contributing to the sewer line through Red Wing that will provide for sewer service at some point in the future, so this school and the development of that site is imminent. The other property is located just off Goose Hill Road, so if you take Long Lane toward the east, once it intersects with Goose Hill, you go north, and there's a new elementary school that's being planned there. So, these schools right now, if you looked up on the records at the school district, you would see that they're predominantly allocated toward Thompson Station. However, once these new schools are built, middle school and elementary, we expect that there's going to be some reallocation of where students from Southbrook would attend. The next page, we're going to talk a little bit about parkland dedication. This shows you the 120 to 125-acre area that would be City of Franklin Park. Alderman Barnhill mentioned he was a little bit concerned about the trailhead. We've focused that off of the major collector road now, so this is where the parking would be located and the storm shelter and trail facilities for the City of Franklin Parks Department. Last page, just for reference, this is what Alderman Peterson was referencing earlier. The area shown here in green shows you the areas that are currently listed on the soils map as Delros soils. We do agree and will provide a geotechnical soils analysis of these areas prior to site plan submittal.
Wow.
Trying to pack a lot into it. I'm selling you a year's worth of studying.
I looked at all this, and I said, he's going to be going longer than I like.
Did I?
No, you did a good job. I think you did a nice job outlining it. So, Board, questions, comments?
As folks are getting ready to comment, I just want to talk a little bit about what you're voting on and not voting on tonight, because there are so many items. The zoning and the annexation items that are on here, both of those were recommended unanimously by Planning Commission, and so our typical practice is when it's voted on unanimously, but those are also three reading items. So that first reading is typically placed on this same meeting as a consent item. It will be aligned to have a public hearing and second reading at the first meeting in August, because we don't have a meeting, second meeting in July, that provides adequate time for us to do notice, et cetera. So, on that August 13th meeting, you will have the second reading and public hearing for both the zoning and the annexation. You will also have the public hearing for the development plan, and that's a one and only, that's a one-vote item, so that you will see that at the same time you're having the second reading on zoning and on annexation. Plan of services, the same way, I believe you'll vote on that on the 13th for one vote, and then same thing for parkland impact fee and road impact fee. So, just so you see how those pieces come together, second reading, for those that require it, would be the 13th, and then assuming those votes carry through, a third reading would be the second meeting in August.
Alderman Martin?
Questions?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, we're ready for comments and questions. Yeah, we're ready for comments and questions.
I would like to know what staff is recommending for lot size.
Well, as Greg mentioned, there are a lot of positive attributes about this plan, and we have worked with them for a very long time. Staff was required to recommend disapproval of the development plan because the lot widths did not meet the minimum lot widths recommended by Envision Franklin.
I understand that. But we're going to vote on annexation and zoning, and, you know, I don't, I don't know that this is the time to talk about it, but I think it's only fair to the developers to talk about our concerns on the front end rather than wait till we get to the third read.
Wait till we get to the third reading and then disapprove it or vote against it. So, that's the reason I would like to know on the front end what you all are recommending. Are you recommending what Envision Franklin says, which is the forty, forty-five-foot lots?
Yes.
For all of them?
Staff recommends the minimum for single-family residential lots of forty-five feet because that's what the policy is in Envision Franklin.
And I want to piggyback on that. The statement Joey made and that was also made at Planning Commission, this isn't the only time we've had development plans come through that have a smaller lot size than that minimum.
True.
So, if this is going to be something you want us to explore, we'd like to do that in a more systematic way, incorporate it in Envision Franklin. It has ramifications for how we do other planning because that leads to greater density, which puts greater strain on infrastructure, specifically water and sewer and road impact. We need to, we need to understand that. So, if you're comfortable with consistently seeing some smaller lot sizes, we'd rather know that now and start incorporating that in an update to the Envision Franklin plan, or we're going to, we're going to live more with the standard that you've set in place. So, you know, I appreciate the creativity that a developer brings sometimes to a project, but we also want to have some standards that help us do good long-term planning around infrastructure. So, that's why we're sort of, not just on this project, but making a general plea about we've seen this a couple times. This is the biggest example, but we've seen it a few other times where we go to a smaller lot size as a proposed element. And if you're going to be comfortable with that, let us know, and we'll work back through the Envision Franklin plan and its ramifications elsewhere.
Well, I do understand that, but I think we've worked so hard on Envision Franklin, and there were reasons for that. There were reasons for those limits on, so I would be in favor of sticking with those limits. And it's only fair to the developers, so you all can know on the front end what we're going to approve. I mean, if, I just don't see, and if it, if we go to thirty-four-feet lots now, everybody that comes in is going to want to, that many or more. So, that's where I stand on it.
Alderman Peterson.
Just to, just to respond to that, we do have to remember that those other developments that had the less than thirty-five feet were probably approved long before Envision Franklin came into being.
That was my question.
That's true. West Haven was approved in two thousand and one, but even with a policy in place that allowed for thirty-four-foot wide lots, you do not have a development today that is one hundred percent thirty-four-foot lots. They're all mixed. They're mixed together. There is lot diversity. It is a part of providing really a full range of economic options within a neighborhood.
And I do want to say that that is something that to think about. When Alderman Martin said though, if we go to recommending thirty-four-foot lots, we'll have everybody and his brother coming in and asking for only that.
But again.
Even though this one's not.
Since two thousand and one, it has been a policy to allow for lot sizes smaller than forty, and that hasn't been the case. It hasn't been the case that you've had a neighborhood come in with all thirty-fours. So, I understand what you're saying.
Alderman Berger. Alderman Bransford's next.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're at the end of the line now, Alderman Berger.
Okay. I think this is kind of one of those unique situations where we, I'm saying, a diverse, you know, price point, and that is something that I have advocated for a while on this board, is that we do not want all thirty-fours. I think when we have the opportunity to have some thirty-fours and some McMansions and whatever, that's a good, as was mentioned, it makes for a nicer neighborhood in the community, a lot of growth. So, I would not be opposed to this particular plan going forward with a mixture and a diverseness of it. And I think that's, is one way we can get some of these families who's probably in that eighty-one thousand dollars a year job, household job, could come and live in our community. So, I see this, Greg, and team as a nice way of adding some inclusion, okay?
Alderman Barnhill.
I guess two or three, two or three different questions. If we were to go to the forty-five-foot requirement, what does that do overall density? Do you know that if that, if we were to eliminate thirty-four-foot lots? The second thing is, we go back to Envision Franklin, but Envision Franklin is a, it's really a guideline. It's really not a, in the, locked into the stone or chiseled in the stone, a ordinance or anything else. It is a guideline that we use. And I appreciate some of the comments that were made. I don't know that I'm locked into a forty-five-foot lot. I was, to be quite frankly, I'm going to, I'm going to smile and say this, I was planning on measuring mine, just to see what it was, because I doubt very seriously if my lot's forty-five feet wide, and I've lived there for seventeen years now. So, it's not, it is diversity, it is an opportunity for different styles, it is an opportunity for different homes. I think we've got, I really think we've probably got a bigger issue with, with the, I don't want to say this too loudly, we've got a bigger issue with overall growth than we have with the density of whether or not it's a thirty-four-foot lot. Tell me one more time, how many, how many thirty-four-foot lots?
Well, between thirty-four.
And forty-five? Forty-four.
Forty-five, yeah, we have thirty-seven percent.
Okay.
What's, how much is that? How many lots is twenty-seven percent?
And of the single-family residential lots, which is really where the Envision Franklin policy applies, forty-three percent of those lots are less than the minimum of forty-five feet. So, close to half are less than the minimum for a single-family.
Hmm, interesting.
But, yes, I will say that if those are removed, it would decrease the density. The cost of the land is the same, the cost of the development is the same, the cost of linear foot of roadway is the same. So, you would not be able to fill in the gap between the big-house duplex and the five-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand-dollar, forty-five-foot-wide home. That's the nature of the economics of this.
So, you, the price of the homes then would start at five-seventy-five?
The single-family would start at that.
Okay. Without the thirty-four-foot lots, the single.
The single-family detached homes would.
Okay.
I've got Alderman Speedy. You're going to be last, Alderman Berger. And you're going to be.
Next last.
Really last. Alderman Speedy.
I guess to Mr. Stuckey's comment, I would like for us to, I guess, review the whole lot size, make sure the appropriate water, sewer infrastructures are being taken care of, because I do agree, I think if we are going to stick hard and fast this forty-five-foot lot size, I think we're just saying to the community that unless you can buy a five-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand-dollar house, you're not welcome here. And I know staff has guidelines to meet, but maybe you can speak to a little bit where, doesn't Envision Franklin kind of say that they do encourage more density where the infrastructure does exist? And it seems like this is a location where you've got an interchange less than a mile to the north and to the south of eight-forty, I guess.
Envision Franklin does recommend a variety of housing types, a variety of housing options, a variety of housing price points. So, from that perspective, the plan meets the intent of the guiding principles for vibrant neighborhoods. The minimum lot width comes from Envision Franklin Public Process, where we heard from citizens that the minimums that we have today, or back then, weren't quite large enough. The minimum lot sizes and the minimum lot widths weren't quite large enough for what was desired by the community at the time. So, Envision Franklin has slightly larger minimum lot sizes and slightly larger minimum lot widths than what our zoning calls for, because it's the recommendations. And we're now working on the zoning ordinance update to help implement Envision Franklin. So, that's where those numbers come from. We can look at changing these numbers. It's not a static document that is set in stone, it's not regulatory. It is a long-range plan for how growth and development should occur. And if the lot sizes are desired to be different by the Board and Planning Commission, then we can look into that and provide examples and talk about what the impacts are to stormwater and street infrastructure and serving utilities to the, to the properties. But we would like to know that tonight, if we could, because we're planning out what we're going to be talking about for the zoning ordinance update and for Envision Franklin, which plays a part in this. So, we'd like to kind of know where we'd like to go.
And maybe also to emphasize this point that where maybe you do provide for some smaller lot sizes, it's in a situation where there's a diversity, that it's to avoid the concern that I think we all share, which is you get a development that's entirely, you know, thirty-two-foot lots or something like that. We don't want that. And I think that's what I'm hearing from virtually everybody. So, maybe there's a way for us to talk about, to the extent, maybe there's some averaging or maybe there's a concept that when you go below this certain level, that, that there's still a good mix within a range of lot size, lot widths. Maybe that's a way to look at this, too.
Alderman Berger. You're not going to be last. I've got two more after you.
Oh, shucks. I was counting on that. So, if, I was counting the communities here. So, we have West Haven, Simmons Ridge, Lockwood Glen, Echelon, Waters Edge, and Berry Farms, all with less than forty-five-foot wide lots, correct? Is that what we have here? So, let me ask you something. One of the concerns, I, I'm not that, all that concerned with these lot widths. I really am not, because I think we need a diversity. I think we have healthier communities in the mix. When we have these, you outlined it very nicely with the different lot widths and what was going there and the price points. We do have good infrastructure there. Lewisburg Pike would probably be four-lane one day. I had a couple issues with that. I just wanted to make sure that when we came off and we built four lanes there, that the frontage was still enough. And I think you showed that in the Mead of Avalon picture. So, if the Mead is sitting right there, and they have what we call a greenway in front of it, means green landscape, whatever, you're showing that, and when you push that back with that fence, how many feet were still left there, Greg? How many?
We're dedicating, on average, about thirty-six feet for the right-of-way. Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah. So, in other words, if you did put a four-lane, you'd still have about eighty feet or more to the first home?
Oh, okay. I understand what you're saying.
You still had quite a distance, didn't you?
Yes, we still have about a hundred and twenty feet, a hundred and twenty-five feet on average.
Yeah. And then, and then over in Mead of Avalon, I think it was about a hundred?
They're a hundred and twenty-five feet now.
Okay, so it's.
So, ours is actually twenty-five to thirty feet further back.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, that was a concern of mine. And the other thing is, okay, the diverse price points is, is more allowable with diverse lot sizes.
Absolutely.
Which I, I support that. The other thing is, when we get to Envision Franklin, Alderman Barnhill is right, you know, it's a guideline. It's not a policy, it's not a ordinance, it is a guideline that we're following. And you all have to recommend ordinances, your policy and your guidelines, you have to recommend that, I understand that. And that's why you are not recommending that. But I, I think we have to look at lot diversity. We need options in Envision Franklin because not everything is the same. And when you have a development that has more diversity in it, especially as Alderman Speedy brought up, trying to get people into homes, we need to be concerned with that. We don't need to say, oh, everything's going to be this size and then it's six-hundred, seven-hundred thousand. So, in Envision Franklin, I think we need some lot diversity, we need options put in there. And then, the last thing was, school capacity is really important to me. And we have a new elementary school being built across I-65, right from that development, and then the new middle school. So, have, have you done any school capacity studies or numbers for those homes and the capacity? Because Oak, is it Oakwood?
Oakview.
Oakview? Then, that probably, some of the students going there would be alleviated from the other side, the east side, would be going to the new school on the east side, alleviating some capacity, freeing up some capacity in that area.
Williamson County Schools has a very sophisticated model that they run. I'll have to get the numbers from them, but I'm happy to do that.
Yeah, I think we ought to take a look at that, because it's important to me on school capacity, that we're always looking at that, we're looking at the infrastructure. And it is close to an interchange, which is another great point. So, I think those are all my concerns on that. Thanks.
Alderman Peterson, then Alderman Blanton.
Well, I was, on my first comment, I was just responding to what someone else had said. There are a lot of things to say about this on both sides, I think. And a question that I realized I did not ask before was, you know, we're talking about the lot width, but what about the lot size exactly? I mean, you know, the entire lot, because I just heard tonight that our average square footage of a home that, that got a permit this year was like over four thousand square feet. And so, don't we on that thirty-four-foot lot have at least five feet on both sides being, you know, setbacks?
Yes.
So, really and truly, that means the house can only be less than twenty-five feet wide, is what I was thinking. So, that is something to, to think about there. And as I say, I would be very interested, not, not off the top of your head, just about the size of the lot, because if you're thinking about putting an average, an average building permit went to four thousand square feet. So, that's, that's.
Total, total house size.
We wouldn't have that kind of square footage on these smaller lots.
That's what I thought.
They're much smaller than that.
But still, I was really surprised, because that means that a lot of the building permits were for houses a lot bigger than that, if that's the average, because you know that there were some smaller, just the way you're talking about there. And, and just to continue talking about the lot width, though, Envision Franklin is only improved by the Planning Commission, it is not part of the zoning ordinance, and as we've already stated, not a requirement, it is just a recommendation. Another part of this is that in the conservation zoning, then that means over half of it, I think fifty-six percent of this land is going to be parkland. But, but then, that makes what we call the density there a lot different, because the density is based on the whole three-hundred-and-eighteen acres, not the less-than-two-hundred that really have the buildings on them. And so, that also makes a difference, not only here, but I'm just saying for all developments that are of this type, too. So, you know, that means that the density is really a lot more than, than what is shown, is what is shown there. And I guess the, the final part of that, that is that. And I guess the, the final part of that, that is that surely the non-buildable land doesn't cost as much per acre as the buildable land. I mean, I'm just saying to, to you, you know, just to say that. But as I say, there are a lot of aspects of this that are, you know, something to be said on both sides. I, I was one of the, no, wait, let me see. The only thing I voted against, I think, was, I know, was the development, the development plan. But see, that's what has all the details in it and everything. Did, did not vote against recommending, you know, that it be annexed into the city or anything like that. However, to finish up, I do want to say that if there start being smaller lots, more techni, real density, you know, I, I think we would be required to look over what that means for sewer, that, what that means for other infrastructure.
Alderman Blanton.
Just real briefly, I tend to agree with a lot of what's been said here. I appreciate the price point options, even though to me the lower end is not really that low. I would challenge the reality of eighty-one thousand as a median income, but oh, well. But I think, it's funny, it's frustrating how we do the scenario of pulling out the parkland to decide the density. To me, I think it's misleading because that does, that ends up being where people get tripped up. As to thinking, oh, you have this much land, you have to have this, it, it doesn't, to the normal person who doesn't do your job or have your mathematical planning mind, it, it doesn't make sense. But I think, I'm, I'm excited that it's not apartments. I think it's giving people an opportunity to be homeowners and not home renters. I, I hate to see, you know, the rural landscape go away, but it's the world that we're living in right now. So being, having the setbacks, I think that's being appropriate so that the people who are used to driving through that corridor are so, I mean, the rooftops are going to be rooftops. But to not have it like AutoZone in the bank on Columbia Avenue is a welcome sight, so.
Well, I, I hear the siren song of this mixed economy homes. And, you know, I, I've never been opposed to density. In fact, I don't think this board's ever really voted against. They, they've embraced density versus other communities around us. I don't mind looking at the lot sizes. I think it's important to have a lot of variation in a development. But I think the thing that concerns me most is so many times we're brought projects with the promise that they're going to be affordable. And we have no way of checking that. And that's terribly frustrating because this board is working to provide affordable and workforce housing and trying to do our part. And, you know, I've said it before, I've challenged the home builders before, bring us some workforce housing. And so far, you know, I, I think maybe my comments have gone on deaf ears. You know, if we're going to be approving density, I think somebody's going to have to give a little bit on their side to help us. You know, the, I hear about traffic, I hear about we're growing too fast, I hear all these things. And we're doing this because we're such a desirable area. The whole area is on fire.
Sure.
And our traffic problem's not going to get solved by building more roads. It's going to get solved by having more people that live here. And the designers and the developers are going to have to start cooperating or they're going to dig themselves in a hole and be out of business and affect the whole community. So I don't mind looking at the lot sizes. I think that's a good idea. I could, you know, one of my fears would be that everything now is thirty-four-foot lots. That'd be terrible. And so somewhere there has to be some percentage. Now, you, the percentage you have in here, forty-three percent of the thirty-four-foot lots are single-family, that bothers me. But, you know, I'm not sure what we're getting for that if we're approving your density because everything else is pretty expensive in there. So those would be my comments.
Well, I think one of the things we can do is, we can look at, I, I know that Williamson, I mean, yeah, Williamson County Housing Partnership has a spreadsheet data that shows what, where the workforce housing levels are. Let me see if I can get that chart from them. I'll talk with my client and we'll see what we can.
Well, I, I think that y'all need to be doing your part.
We will.
And rather than just coming in and talking some pretty words about this mixed economic development, you know, I like the idea of having a lot of different price points.
Yes.
But I think somehow or other y'all have to come to realize that, you know, you're going to have to stick to what you're going to tell us.
Okay.
Because I don't think that we're going to, our, our memory's pretty good as a board. Last comment.
This has happened to us. We've been burned. And we've been told when things were approved, that it would be workforce housing, Chick-fil-A apartments, for example. And before anybody ever moved in, it was a luxury apartment. Wasn't workforce anymore. So many times you can't help that, I guess, because if somebody comes in and offers you more than you're asking, of course you're going to take it. So anyway, you understand where we're coming from, I hope.
I just need to do some more research.
Yeah.
Great. All right, we're going to go to the trail system and parkland impact fee for this project.
Have Lisa and Kevin come up. Greg did describe some of that, but this is the specific agreement that talks about the establishment of the trail system and some of the other amenities and how that fits into the, the parkland ordinance structure. Lisa, take it away.
Thank you, Eric. So within this development, the parkland impact fee is three million, three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars. The parkland improvements include the design and construction of a multi-use trail system, which would be, reminds you of a hiking or biking, multi-purpose biking trail, benches, park amenities, bike racks, trash receptacles, a trailhead, and a park structure with restrooms. The improvements include a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five acres of hilltop land, which for recreation, it is a very great use. It's a very good use in this area. And it's also eligible for a hundred percent offset parkland impact fees. So that is the agreement for you tonight. Kevin, is there any?
No, I think Greg. I think Greg and his team has demonstrated, and really used the ordinance to his advantage that will be to our advantage at the end. It'll be a nice park at the very end of it. It'll be an addition to our park in, in the south part of town. That would be very beneficial. And I like to compliment Greg on bringing that because really the land, if you look at the land value of that, it's sixty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars. That's only fifty-four acres. So he's get, he, he's looking at the ordinance and doing what we have asked of the ordinance. So he, he's almost gobbling, you know, doubling that. Plus, he's going to have to build it. So I'd like to compliment, compliment Greg on that.
I made Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Burger.
Is there any water, any ponds or anything in the area or will be created or anything in this, in the blue, in the blue?
There's really not.
Not, so.
Not, not really on this land.
Alderman Berger.
Question. So I'm looking at, the handout you gave us for projected impact fees, required parkland dedication fees over three million, and then the value of the dedicated land is seven point five million?
Yes, correct, based on.
So that land, most, most of that land, if not all of it, probably most of it, is, according to our policy, unbuildable.
Correct.
Right? That's our community. Another community may not have made that land unbuildable. That could have been a buildable land in another community possibly.
Absolutely.
So I, I was just curious. Somebody mentioned about land prices. And I'm thinking, so I'm not sure the seller cares about our policy, I suppose, when he's pricing your land. Does he? Because it's seven point five million. That's a lot of money.
Well, your ordinance has established a per-acre purchase price for parkland dedication. Would it appraise for that same amount? I'm not sure. We'd have to get an appraiser.
Yeah, but it's.
Is, is the land that's being purchased holistically over sixty-two thousand dollars? For the most part, yes. And so if you're having to set aside fifty percent of that land, that means that the price per lot is twice as much as it would be in another subdivision that didn't have this requirement. So it, it adds significant expense.
Yeah. I was just looking at that. It's sort of blowing me away.
They're big numbers.
Wait a minute. Okay. All right. But, and, and then, of course, according to our policy, that money, that three, that three point two odd dollars will be, million will be used in that area.
Correct. So a hundred percent, what they would do is, is you have the dedication of the land as well as then they must construct, it must be approved, and then a reimbursement would take place. So they're eligible for one hundred percent of the three point three million to receive that back. So they're investing it back into South Brook for those residents that are moving in that area. And I would say also that you would see Berry Farms and Lad and others that are living in that surrounding area, that this would provide something different in the south part of town that we currently do not have.
And will any of that eventually get connected then?
The goal is through what's on existing master plans show multi-purpose trail systems. They'll have trail systems within the subdivision itself, but then also allow Lewisburg and connect to Berry Farms where you have more commercial areas.
So they could get on their bikes and ride up to Berry Farms?
Correct.
Okay, good. Thanks.
Okay, we're ready for road impact fee offset agreement.
Paul's going to come up and touch on implications here in terms of road impact and infrastructure improvements.
So as part of the development, the developer's going to sell us some of the right-of-way for Lewisburg Pike as part of the road impact fee offset agreement. And then also to, to offset the impacts that are happening to Lewisburg and Goose Creek, we're going to add a bunch of different turn lanes there and through lanes, receiving lanes. We've been in that intersection twice already, upgrading it. And I hope this will be the third and last time to get this intersection upgraded. And so they're eligible for full recapture of their road impact fees estimated at over two point nine million dollars. They're also building a portion of a collector roadway that'll eventually connect over to McLemore and Lewisburg. It does require a major thoroughfare plan amendment, which we're working on. We're in agreement with the developer on that. And we'll be bringing that to the planning commission here shortly. And so the estimated in collector right now is five hundred and ninety thousand dollars in that agreement. And so again, it's in a draft format here. We wanted to pair that up with the development plan and the, and the annexation, but we'll continue to work on that and you'll see it shortly. So happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Alderman Barnhill.
I thought at one time that, that you could not collect a hundred percent. In fact, your offsets were not, you were not allowed to collect a hundred percent against whatever the cost of, whatever it was.
So it's all based on the contract we have written. They have to get their design approval, scope of services through design consultants. We approve those, then they have to bid the project, and we have to approve those bids. They only get back the money in which they spend, and we're approving those contracts prior to. So we're checking them on historical prices that we pay consultants, historical bid forms. And if they spend it, they spend it. If they exceed it, then that's on them. And they only get reimbursed for what they actually spend. So they got to provide a lot of documentation to show us what was actually.
We do kind of reconcile it at the end of the day.
Right. Okay. So, so if they spend more, they actually don't get up to the amount that they spent.
They get up to what they're eligible for.
They'll get up to what they're.
And if it's beyond that, that's theirs to absorb.
Okay. That's, that's what I was getting to.
Yes, sir. Thank you for clarifying.
Okay, we'll move on to, I'm sorry, Alderman Peterson.
I'm trying to look back at some of my stuff that I've gotten ready to talk about from, from our late, something that's later on our agenda. But those, the east-west minor collector, you know, it says to line up with the future McLemore connection. And then I think on the other, I don't see it written here, but it was talking about building something that would eventually tie up to Snowbird Lane. And, and those things, whenever I looked back on our major thoroughfare plan, those things, I'm, excuse me, those things were like items eighty-eight or ninety-one or something on our major thoroughfare plan, which were virtually the things that we talked about at the very end through, you know, I, I mean, maybe not even in twenty forty or something like that. And I know things change whenever, you know, you have developments and everything, but I'm, I still like to get some information from our staff about that.
Yeah. Prior to this development being approved, we have to amend the major thoroughfare plan. And that's what we're going to work on doing here shortly and bringing that forward to the planning commission to, to look at. But we, at least we as staff and development or developer are in agreement on how to proceed with that. It's just a matter of getting that conversation started and formally approved by the planning commission.
Okay, we're going to go on to item nine is a, an amendment to Contract 2018-0134 with Town Planning and Urban Design Collaborative LLC for the planning and zoning services related to the zoning ordinance update. This is just additional work they've done.
And this is in the fiscal twenty budget. This has been anticipated and provided for with the budget you just approved at the end of last month.
Item ten, Resolution 2019-61, approving a revised development plan for Lockwood Glen. One more time.
Thank you. The total number of approved dwelling units has not increased from previous plans and the overall layout is the same as what was previously approved. The dwelling unit numbers from a previously removed section are being moved into section sixteen and seventeen. Additionally, the revision includes the addition of another external access point to South Carruthers Road, and this will help both ingress and egress traffic for the entirety of the development. The development plan revision is consistent with Envision Franklin and the intent of the previously approved concept plan. Both staff and the planning commission recommend approval. Thank you.
Item number eleven, professional services agreement with the Corredino Group to provide construction, engineering, inspection services for the state Route Ninety-Six West Multi-Use Trail Project.
So we're getting ready to bid this project and it will start later this year. This provides for that construction, engineering, and inspection services to go along with it. We have put this on both agendas so that we can keep all the elements we can on this project moving along.
It's a, it's a big project. Sorry, thank you. It's a, it's a big project. We're moving a lot of utilities. It's not just go out and build a simple sidewalk. And so it is about a year-long construction, but we're very excited to be delivering that project. And we're in about two years of delivering a project with state and federal funding. And T-Dot will tell you, it takes three to five years to do those projects. So we're, we're moving fast on it and very excited to get it moving forward.
Item twelve, contract order number, final change order to the Contract City of Franklin Contract 2017-0186 with Adams Contracting for the construction of the Carnton Lane Covert Replacement Project, increase of eighty-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars and forty-six cents and a time extension of eighty days.
So this is where a bridge was failing and we went out and replaced that bridge. We did have seventy-five thousand dollars of contingency funding. What we realized is our surveyor was not able to pick up a water line that didn't get located. And so therefore, we had to move a water line, which is where most of that funding went to. The contractor did a great job out there, provided good pricings for the water line relocation and ultimately delivered us a good project. So we're recommending approval of final change order.
Item thirteen, procurement award to Microback Laboratories, Inc. of Maryville, Tennessee, an estimated total annual amount of twenty-two thousand, two hundred and seventy-six dollars for industrial pretreatment, sampling, and testing, water reclamation facility, influent, effluent testing, and testing of river samples. Any question about that one? Item fourteen is a procurement award to Standard and Associates of Chicago, Illinois, in the total estimated annual amount of thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars for police promotional process assessment services for the human resources police departments. Any question? Okay. Next is fifteen, Contract 2019-0214, and a local agreement between Franklin Special School District and the City of Franklin.
Thank you. Excuse me.
Okay. This is really just follow-up on, we presented this to you, recent meeting in terms of the ballfield improvements and other infrastructure around Freedom Middle School and Poplar Grove School. And this provides for the design bidding and construction of those improvements and a fifty-fifty split of those costs between City Franklin and Franklin Special School District.
Item sixteen, ordinance creating competitive seal proposal process to purchase goods and services. Ordinance 2019-24.
We had talked about this previously in terms of our need to update our language and our ordinance to reflect the state law to provide for a seal bid proposal process. I believe we've essentially lifted the state law and put it into an ordinance form here locally, and that's what we'd like to move forward with. We do have some proposals in the pipeline that we think would benefit from this process. So, we do have it on for both discussion at work session, first reading tonight, and second reading in August, in the first meeting of August, should you be comfortable with this ordinance. So, we have our legal team and Christine here as well.
And I just want to introduce you guys to Bill. I don't know if all of you have met him before, but this is Bill Squires, the Assistant City Attorney. And he drafted this ordinance.
It's good to see you all.
Good job. The bravery of your comments are appreciated.
Happy to answer any questions you may have. Other than that...
Bill, I think you crushed it.
I'll be along. My work is, I think.
Welcome aboard, Bill. Okay, we're now...
Oh, it's not.
Item 18 is Resolution 2019-68, a resolution to adopt the project list for the FY 2019 to '28 CIP Capital Investment Program.
I don't have a long presentation for you. We spent a couple hours last Tuesday on this. I will just say, overall, we've provided you with an overview of about 30 projects that we think was a blend of the board's top priorities, and then, some other projects that had some either time-sensitive nature or other needs or other opportunities that merited inclusion. In total, that brings you to 30 projects that total a little over $280 million. Looking at those specific projects and other constraints, our financial plan, financial model, shows a capacity of a little over $300 million to put against those projects. Again, we believe those are fairly conservative estimates, both in terms of growth assumptions and a very conservative look at what we expect to come in from those development-related revenues, impact fees, et cetera, that can also help with projects. And has us delivering those projects with over 55% plus of cash resources paying for the projects, which is, I think, good fiscal conservative approach to delivering projects as well. So, glad to answer any questions. You've had a little more time to process and digest the group of projects. As they're listed, the first 13 are in priority order, in the manner in which the board gave those to us. And then, the next 17 are really those projects that were identified that is a blend of priority, need, and opportunity. So, those are not necessarily in a specific order, but the first 13 are. So, we've written a resolution that would move those projects forward that we'd like to have you consider.
Alderman Barnhill.
I've spent a pretty good bit of time looking at these and looking over the projects, and I will say this, you know, I think that, in order, if there's one particular project on there that we've got to dwell into more, study, and more impact, and so forth on that, and that's the City Hall project. And whether or not we are looking at a public-private partnership, what we're looking at, the footprint here, we've got a tremendously valuable piece of property sitting here, and to put City Hall back down, I don't know what the property's worth, 3, 4 acres. Tell me what it's worth. Then, if you put a $24 million City Hall on it, you suddenly got a 35 or $40 million City Hall sitting downtown here. And I, you know, I've got to look at that much stronger than what we've got. I would say this, and this is not a reflection on anyone, the way we did the numbers, the numbers, I don't, I think there was three of us that didn't even have City Hall on the list. And for it to rise to that level, and for the number of projects that we need to do as far as roads, streets, sidewalks, all of the stuff that we need to do to enhance the quality of life for all of the citizens of Franklin, I think we've got to look, I think I'm gonna look strongly at whether I am supportive of a $24 million City Hall. And I'll smile and say this, you know, it's possible that I might not have to look at it, because we've got an election coming up, and somebody might relieve me from that, from that opportunity to view that. But, if here, I will look at that strongly, that's 10%. $280 million, 24 million of it is going to City Hall. So, 10% of what we're doing in all of the capital expenditure projects comes back to City Hall. Would not argue in the least with anyone that we don't need it. Not saying we don't need it. I'm saying we do. I'm just saying that, for me to be satisfied, I've got to have some more discussion and more understanding of the direction in which we're going and what we're looking at on City Hall.
Alderman Peterson.
I also have some thoughts about a lot of the other, the things that have been presented to us. I went back and looked, and, you know, on those, the 30, some of them were on the Alderman's choices for our, I guess our grading of them. And many of them, though, were not anywhere close to the top. And, you know, I do appreciate some of them being described as opportunities that are going on, you know, right now, and we have an opportunity to do something that we might lose if we don't do something right now. But, there are many others. I mean, honestly, as I say, I went in and marked the things and saw where the Alderman had recommended them, and honestly, half of them, I guess, weren't even in our top, our top 30. And so, because we took some of the things out. I remember, you know, the, right now, I'm just, well, one of them was the Carruthers coming from 96 west, 96 east, sorry, going down to the place. But, I'm just saying, I'm still unsure how some of these got chosen, and I'd really like to have some more discussion on, you know, some of them now. And also, I was talking about some of the road things here. Whenever I looked back in, we were talking about the major thoroughfare plan, some of these projects were very, very far down the list on our major thoroughfare plan. And I think, including like the real extension of Carruthers Parkway beyond, probably, probably the Goose Creek-Patensville thing there was number 88 on our major thoroughfare plan. So, and, but it's, you know, it's shown in here, and the things about the Patensville Road and Pratt Lane improvements and everything, again, things may have changed.
And those are specifically, in those two cases, those are specifically driven by development in that area, and the need to improve those roads, and some commitments, the bridge in particular, that were made related to the Ramsey headquarters. So, every one of these has a specific reason or, you know, description that goes with it. We tried to provide some of that to you on the meeting a week ago, but we're glad to provide more of that information. But, you know, your priorities were the driving force, but they weren't the only consideration. There's some other opportunities and other information that we felt necessitated these projects being considered. Again, 2/3, 70% of these projects, when you look at our, that 280 million that's moving forward, are entirely your priorities. The other 30% is this group of projects that fill some other needs. And we're glad to walk through those again in any way that we can. You know, and however you want to move forward, if you want to vote on the first priority group, we can return to these later in the year if you'd like, or if you want to pull some others out, we're open to doing that. I would suggest you, at a minimum, identify where you feel strongly you've got a consensus. If that's that first 13 that we prioritized initially, we could vote on that in August, and then, bring back, cycle back around with the balance of them, maybe provide you with some other information. You know, we'll follow however you want to do it. I think it's important, though, if there are certain priority projects, to let us get started so that we can plan for them and focus on, one of the things I really charge staff with is a focus on project delivery and how we stage these and get these ready and deliver them. They're complex projects, but your direction sets that all in motion. So, that's another way for you to look at it. If you want to take the top of that list, approve that initially, and then, let us keep working on it, that's another option to consider.
Well, I noticed some of the, we had like additional opportunities, and these are not necessarily things I'm against or for or anything like that, but the new parking structure for $8 million, you know, we need to talk more about something like that.
Certainly.
You know, because there might even be a surface lot. I mean, I'm thinking that, once, you know, some of our properties here that are being worked on right now that are close to downtown, they've been using a lot of just parking in our bicentennial park area and everything, and it could be that there might be some, you know, surface parking, and especially where we could have, you know, a shuttle coming into downtown, because some of the people are working downtown and need a place to park. And so, that would be easily done. And I do want to say that, in, at our special meeting, the comment right at the end said something like, you know, this will be revisited every two years. I appreciate that. But, the thing is, if you start planning a eight or 10 or 20, whatever, million dollar thing, you know, that's right, it's gonna take some time on that, but the thing is, you might want to think about the end game there too and not spend, you know, because sometimes people will say, well, we've already spent so much money on this, you might as go ahead and do it. And, you know...
You're still gonna have decisions along the way as we develop these. This is identifying capacity, and then, the development process begins. City Hall in particular, you're gonna have a lot of say on that. The new parking structure is primarily there because the majority of the board said they were interested in it.
Absolutely.
So, I mean, that gets to your previous point. It's driven by your priority.
Right.
We put it in there. It's a, it is a rough estimate of cost. The sites, the other opportunities will drive that cost more specifically. That is not a immediate in the 10-year window development, but it was something that has been identified as a need. We've seen a lot of parking pressure in downtown. There will be changes as Harpa Square comes online. There are some surface lots. A surface lot is in your top 13, the previous board priority. We do have, I believe, a surface lot in there as well. So, we'll continue to look at those opportunities. And some of these, it is a capacity allocation, and then, more specific plans come together as we review. You might have some other opportunities that allow you to have parking developed, maybe with a City Hall development or redevelopment, or some other lot comes available, or some other private development incorporates more parking as an opportunity. Those always have, the landscape will always change and plans evolve naturally with some of these elements.
And you just mentioned something. Harpa Square is going to have some parking...
About 200 publicly available, but pay spaces.
Pay spaces. Yes, yes. That's right. And I'm looking back at these right now. Another thing or an opportunity, that home raising project, have we heard any more from the Corps of Engineers about what their timeline is? Because, I hadn't read that thing I sent to you, you know, that's...
I don't know that we know exactly, but...
Hundreds of pages or something like that.
We're gonna meet on July 18th with the impacted residents and go through that with them, and then, from there, we will, and the Army Corps will be part of that discussion. So, I would expect that's a question, if we don't have the answer by then, we will be asking of them at that public meeting to get a sense of what that timing is, the timeline for residents to make that decision.
Exactly.
For our purposes, we've fully funded all 35 or 36 properties in here. So, it is a voluntary program. So, there's a chance that that costs less, because not everyone may opt in, despite the fact that vast majority of the cost is being borne by either federal or city dollars.
And I appreciate that. But, you know, whenever they sent this, apparently, they did this huge 400-page thing, and they didn't even let, I mean, you know, back in the middle of June, and the city, as far as I know, didn't even know about it.
Yeah, they've done some preliminary reports that they've been putting up online. It's entirely driven by the Army Corps of Engineers.
Exactly.
We're just gonna be there to help coordinate with the residents and local citizens.
And it is their project at the end of the day. We're putting money into it. We're helping them facilitate it, but it's an Army Corps project.
But, I just wanted to make sure about the timeline for, you know. And there's several other things, but anyway, that's...
Alright.
Thank you. Thank you.
I want to call us into executive session for a quick, brief executive session before we get to the board meeting. So, we're gonna declare this meeting adjourned, and we'll go into executive session.